All right, good evening. It's shortly after 7:00 PM. And this is the regularly scheduled meeting the Worcester City Council held this Tuesday evening, September 2nd, 2025. Tonight's meeting is in here in council chambers and live streamed on YouTube. Our next meeting will be September 15th on Monday. And I just want to thank everyone for attending this evening. And hopefully everyone, all council and everyone else had a lovely summer with our little break. So with that, Ms. Hamilton, would you please call the roll on those that are here in attendance?
Mr. Abernathy.
Here.
Mr. Gaffey.
Here.
Mr. Husey.
Here.
Ms. Knappick.
Here.
Mr. Malta.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum and the agenda will remain as presented. At this time, I ask you to stand and join the members of city council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting of June 16?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Abernathy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Husey. All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Communications from the mayor. Mr. Mayor, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. President, Council. Got some remarks here, but I think I'm gonna just leave with my, don't bury the lead here. I'm gonna welcome Chief Matt Fisher back.
Listen, just very brief, and part of the reason it's coming in tonight, number one, as I texted somebody else today, is just to let you know I'm all still alive, which I'm very lucky for. When you Google what I had, the survivability rate is very low, let alone being upright. So the fact that I'm here is, whatever you believe, it's somebody had a hand on me that day for sure. But definitely working my way back and definitely wanted to say to everyone, thank you. Thank you for the thoughts, the prayers, the cards, the texts, the check-ins, whatever it was, it made a difference. I appreciate everyone doing that and appreciate y'all and just needed to be here tonight to say thanks to everybody and I appreciate it. So that's all. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. And I'll do some exaggerations, say that maybe six months ago, there might have been one person in the world that thought that we'd be back in front since September 2nd. There's probably that thing.
Matt Fisher doesn't remember that far back, but for sure, if anybody did, it was my wife. And I can't say enough about her because she had to carry a lot and she did it with unwavering faith. So good to be back. Thank you, sir.
So going back, it's been a busy summer for city hall and I'm sure all of you as well. It's been two and a half months since our last meeting and it seemed like there's a lot of material here. I looked at the calendar and realized it's been about 20% of the calendar year since our last meeting. So quite a bit of time has gone by. I extend an invitation to all council members to meet individually over the break. I want to thank those of you that took time out of your busy schedules to do so. For those council members, my apologies because some of this may be old news, so please forgive me, but here we go. During the summer, you know, we had Main Street Music on the square every Thursday, Friday, and Saturday evening. Wayne Center for the Arts had a music series with four weekday evening performances on their lawn. Ohio Line Opera, a community band concert on the square, a number of cruises sponsored by Main Street, farmer markets every Saturday morning. So we had quite a bit going on downtown. Ribbon cuttings and groundbreaking ceremonies throughout the city and county. July 24th, we had the topping off ceremony for the new Justice Center addition and we got a tour of the facility at the same time. July 25th, we attended the open house for the new ribbon municipal building. Had a chance, I know their mayor, but I also got a chance to meet some of their council members. And as you might imagine, they deal with some of the same issues we do. August 8th, Joel and I were able to participate in a groundbreaking ceremony for a new home being built by Habitat for Humanity at the corner of Long and Grant Street. Not only was a couple of the future homeowners a part of the ceremony, but also the parents or the husbands who came from out of state to see the event. A lot of very happy people, probably been by there, you see the foundation went up now and that's gonna be a nice addition. Later that week, we had a ribbon cutting for the Ku Klux savings bank office up on the north end of Milltown Road. August 22nd, Seaman Corporation had a groundbreaking for their new addition that looks, it's gonna be a great facility. August 25th, we had a ribbon cutting for an old huddle mural on the back of what I think of as the Newbury Building. If you've not had a chance to check that out, please do so. It's interactive, you need to take your cell phone with you and read the instructions for per need. Then August 29th, we had ribbon cutting for Wago. You know, we had some council members there. Operations actually began August 4th and Kevin's gonna talk a little bit more about that later. And then we had news of several restaurants that look like they're coming to town in the next few months. So again, stay posted on that, whether or not they actually pull through and do that remains to be seen, but they're taking all the necessary preliminary steps for that to happen. In Wago, I'll use that event to put out that over the recess, both that program and the other, every other day recycling program had gone live. In both cases, there was a learning curve for the theory, but in both cases, that seems to have resolved itself fairly quickly. In the process, we did gain some insights in our communications challenges in the current environment. And at this point, I'm gonna refer this over to Phil because Phil was kind of running point, certainly in the recycling and some of his observations and some of the stuff you're taking in your response.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So one of my initiatives when coming in here is always, and I think it was the city's goal, was to have clear communication to everyone. And one of the things I mentioned to Joel when I first started was, we need a communications director, like ASAP. The fact that current communications are spread across multiple departments led us to the point of finally pulling the trigger on it and hiring, looking to hire somebody to fill that role. So the goal for this communication marketing project manager is gonna be clear, accurate, and timely communication to foster public trust, encourage civic engagement, and ensure transparency in local government. As I mentioned, recent years, the city of Worcester has experienced a significant increase in the volume of complexity and information that must be shared with residents, businesses, community partners, and the media. As I mentioned again, currently, the responsibility of communication is spread across all departments. This is on top of their primary duty, typically falls as secondary duty to get the information out. A dedicated communication and marketing project manager will ensure the city's messaging is strategic, unified, and responsive. This person will serve as a central point of contact for all public information efforts, leveraging every available platform, including newspapers, newsletters, social media, press releases, and the city website. Nobody wants me running social media, believe me, I'm not good at it. The individual for this role will be responsible, amongst other things, for coordinating across multiple departments to ensure consistent, transparent messaging, managing the city's brand, and the visual identity to maintain professionalism and public recognition, strengthening relationships with local media, community groups, residents, throughout engagement. By investing in this position, the city of Worcester will be better equipped to improve transparency and trust between the public, city council, and administration, proactively share information rather than reacting to rumors and misinformation. And I want to make a point that this is not a nice-to-have position. It is a critical function in ensuring that our residents feel informed, respected, and connected to their local government. The communication and marketing project manager will provide the leadership and expertise necessary to make the city's communication efforts proactive, cohesive, and impactful, ultimately strengthening our relationship with the community we serve. And to go on top of what Mayor Reynolds said, most of the calls that came in about the every other week recycling, I took the worst of the worst, the people that were extremely unhappy. And I always ended every single call with, how can we reach you better? What is the best way? And the responses were all over the place. I had one older resident say, you need to get it on social media. I had someone in their twenties say, you need to send out a flyer. And I was like, wow, okay. So that's not what I would have expected those answers to be, but I thanked everyone for the responses. And this kind of feeds into this, that we need someone that's gonna be able to really reach out to residents, especially since the way that people get their news has changed so much over the last 10 years, even over the last five years. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Truski. This gives a little subset of the general population that pushed this, but they're pretty ardent about this, and it's the area of pollinator gardens. We did have some meetings over the summer to try to clarify policy, didn't require any changes in existing policies, but I think we were able to provide some guidance for those that are interested in pursuing that. Mr. Myers was a part of those and he may have his own thoughts on the process. And I want to thank him for his participation, but it seems to have gone over well. Lots of construction projects going on in and around the community. The Pace Project at the hospital continues on and they're looking for completion somewhere in January. And at some point, there'll be tour schedules that we'll sure make, to make available to city council. Railroad bridge replacement on Madison Avenue has been completed at long last. I mean, was that two and a half years in the making, I think? But if you did, if you bloop past those pictures that went out, I think it's part of the newsletter, take a look at those. Those are pretty spectacular, how they brought that bridge in and installed it in the middle of the night. The Jarrett Companies Building is flying along, if you've driven by that. Roundabouts at 585 in Guyer Chapel Road and Smithville Western in Honeytown are now open, with another at 585 and Five Points waiting in the wings. I think that's a 26th project, if not 27th. And a reminder that we used that 585 roundabout as an opportunity to do some road widening south of the intersection. So next one is good news, bad news. After a lull of a few months, the fiber optic companies are back. So the complaints from property owners are back as well. The good news is it seems to be we're in the end game here. They're mostly hoping to be done by the end of the year, so hopefully we get them done and out. I guess everybody's looking forward to that. Cities have its own projects, which again, Joel touches on in greater detail, but to bring the public up to speed. The Silver Road reconstruction and installation of a shared-use path along Venture Boulevard are ongoing. The path itself is complete, so that's available for use now. You may not know this, but De Giacomo Green is down at the eastern end of Liberty, right before it crosses the tracks there. And for the older ones of us in the crowd, there was a building there known as the De Giacomo Building back in the day. The sign there has been missing for some time and PPM got that replaced and freshened the area in general. And a special thanks to Ed Gaspary, who had done some work for as part of the original sign and was able to replicate some of that for us. We've had street paving projects going on throughout the city. We've received a grant. This is really Worcester Community Hospital is probably driving this. And one thing that's become clear to me is that the Worcester Community Hospital has a lot more political clout than the city of Worcester because when their name is attached to a grant request, things seem to happen. But we have a grant from the federal government, and Senator Houston, I think, has been responsible for this, of $250,000 to help with design expenses related to a kidney roundabout in front of the hospital property. And then I think we've got some additional good news in the last couple of weeks. And Joel, do you want to touch on that?
Sure. So the Congress won't vote on the transportation bill until later this year, but at least in the initial version of the bill, there's an earmark of 3.7 million to construct in a couple of years from now, the kidney, as we're calling it. So that starts to go through reconciliation, you know, vote reconciliation and get passed. But if that makes it through, there'll be money in that bill, basically earmarked to build that particular roundabout.
So, you know, as you know, these projects take many years and we're a long time out, but want to keep you posted on where we stand on those so far. During the break, we, part of this is what we voted on, but it actually had to, certain things had to happen before it went into effect. But the Dora district was expanded, both ours and district. And, you know, I took one for the team and on, I guess, August 22nd was the effective date and I took a ceremonial Dora drink at 1:30 in the afternoon in front of the chamber offices, so you're welcome.
I just want to point out that I went home after I had my drink. I did not return to work. It was a photo op.
You did. Phil clocked out immediately following that. Some, it's in terrible news, but, so we talked about the multi-use path. The one on Milltown has been in front of this group for several things throughout the year. And the last thing I told this group was that we're all set to move forward, it's done. And that happened because there was one landowner, the owner of the apartments complex at the corner of Milltown and...
Melrose.
Melrose, thank you, had finally signed off on it. Took a long time to get their attention and get them to sign off on it. So we thought we were all set until we found out, well, we knew this, the lender had to sign off as well. And we're having just as much trouble getting lenders' attention on this as we had with the property owner. So I believe Andrea is set to go to court on that in December if all else fails, but typically what happens on that is when there's a court date, people get a little more serious about it. So we do anticipate that being wrapped up this year and construction starting next year. Again, this is the multi-use path along Milltown Road.
And I can just say, we're waiting on hot, so that should explain it.
Don't hold your breath. Additional activities since we last met, the zoning review steering committee met on June 17th to review the proposed amendments to the residential zoning code. We're now waiting on OHM to take the comments from the steering committee and consolidate those into a set of proposed amendments that will first go to planning commission and then eventually work their way back to city council for action. June 24th, the Ohio Home Builders Association had their annual meeting in Worcester. Merle Stutzman, I think, the reason it was in Worcester is he's currently the president. And I want to thank him for allowing us to be a part of that event. We spoke a little bit about residential building challenges in the city. And again, as you might imagine, the city, the challenges we face in providing housing are challenges that are common throughout the state. So there's no silver bullets out there, but you do what you can. This is a kind of a minor thing, but it was kind of fun. In July, we signed a friendship cities agreement with the city of Woliso, Ethiopia. And the only reason that was brought to our attention was Dr. Warren Dick, who many of you may know, or some of you may know, out with CFAS. And he's had an outreach effort there for a decade or more. And he's just trying to promote relations between our two communities. And he goes there about twice a year on, I wouldn't call them actually mission trips, but expeditions where they're trying to build things out there. And he is always welcome to add to the party. So if you've ever had a desire to go to Ethiopia, this, he has opportunities for you. July 4th, I've got down as maybe the high point of the summer, we had the Ohio Line Opera Pops Concert on the square, followed by a phenomenal fireworks show in the Kenny Fields area. As always, special thanks to Gilning for his leadership and the Exchange Club for their fundraising efforts. You know, uses as a teaser, next July 4th is our semi-cesquicentennial, 250th anniversary, and we are talking about trying to do something to even increase the bang for our buck with regards to fireworks presentation next year, something to kind of make it stand out from what we're all already doing. A week later, Dan now led a group of city employees on an outing to Worcester Memorial Park over the lunch hour, part of our employee engagement efforts. Did a short hike and a presentation on the history of the park. I caught the presentation, skipped the hike, but I would highly recommend that if you ever want, because Worcester Memorial Park's got an interesting history. Dan knows it very well, as well as the park itself, and again, take advantage of that opportunity if it comes along. July 23rd, we had a swearing-in ceremony for Sergeant Jordan Telquist. She didn't know this at the time, but she is our second female sergeant in Worcester Police Department history, following in the footsteps of Joe Evans, who some of you probably know. And Joe was the first. And just, it was kind of striking at that, a very nice ceremony. Jordan was there with her kids, her parents, her grandparents, a nice ceremony. And then, and I know we had council people in the room for that. That evening, we go home and that was the same night that, or same afternoon, that the police officers in Rain were ambushed. So it was kind of brought home, you know, it was all fun and games for the swearing-in, but it's very serious and challenging work and we can appreciate those people every opportunity we get. July 26th, it was a Saturday, we, Phil and I attended the 5:00 cookout at Bowman Beverage. Our safety services forces were well represented. Phil and I then made light kibbutz and we went down to Greg Long's Military Museum and had our second lunch of the day. This was a presentation for the local National Guard unit who was returning for a week of summer camp with their families, and we had a nice opportunity for that. August 4th was Kiwanis Safety Town. Again, our police and fire were a big part of that week of programming for incoming kindergartners. We had a tour of Fire Station Number One as part of the highlights and that, I've got a, I had a grandson who was part of that group and the fire station was a big hit. August 6th, we had a, I would say it's a quarterly mayor's meeting, except this hasn't been done, I think, maybe since pre-COVID. But prior to that time, it's my understanding that the Wayne County mayors met on a quarterly basis to discuss shared issues. And credit to Tom Poulsen and the county commissioners for trying to put that together again. Tom Poulsen, the Smithville mayor, hosted that out at the Career Center. We had about half the mayors and the county president, as well as U.S. Representative Max Miller and Hot Representative Meredith Craig, and a nice discussion about shared issues. August 13th, Joel and I had lunch with the president of the College of Worcester's Board of Trustees, had a great discussion on ways that we can strengthen our partnership with the college and looking forward to more interaction with him in the time to come. August 14th was the Wayne Metro picnic. Again, I know we had council people there. A large contingent from the city and county were there, as well as many of the social service agencies. August 20th, Field Dreams. This was a Wilfball game between the Wayne County Special Olympics team and our first responders. This was started, because I know the Special Olympics team was looking for a scrimmage, and Donnie Hall got his hands on it, and here's what Donnie came up with.
If you build it, they will come.
No, this is Worcester. So we had a lot of fun with that and I want to thank Donnie for letting me be a part of that. But again, if you know Donnie, he does everything to the nth degree, and this was another effort. They were just looking for a scrimmage and he had, he drew a crowd and we had a great time. And then August 23rd, I guess that was two weekends ago, Long Museum, and again, we talked about the National Guard. We have an existing unit at the old Armory Building, or it's not an old Armory Building, but on Lincoln Way. We used to have two National Guard units. The one on Lincoln Way is the Brigade Engineer Battalion, the 837th. The one on Porridge Road, which has now been a daycare for the last decade or so, was the 447th Military Police Company. And we had a large contingent of Worcester residents as part of that. Then 20 years or so, they did some restructuring and that group got split up between North Canton and Columbus. Well, Greg Long put together something in his, he did a reunion of sorts, got the active members to come in, it was their weekend of training, and they spent the morning there. And also had a reunion event for former members, and we had a lot of Worcester people in that. Mr. Sanders was there. They brought their toys with them, and Mr. Sanders, if you want any details, he's the one to ask, it was all over my head. August 26th, Matt Fisher had his first day back. August 27th, we had our opening session at Citizens Academy. And then this last Friday, we had our employee retiree volunteer picnic, and many of you were at that event, so appreciate your attending there. Again, it's, we have a special community and it's great to have an opportunity to recognize all those who contribute to making that a success. Just a few things looking ahead, on September 6th, obviously the fair opens, the Clydes Devs are gonna be here at the end of the week. We are meeting with Wayne County Commissioners on schedule next week, but probably gonna get postponed. September 17th is the Main Street fundraiser. If you have any interest in that, I'm sure they appreciate your support. And September 30th, College of Worcester marching band is performing on the square. Joel, I know I've taken a lot of time to give, anything you want to add to that?
I'll try to be real quick, if that's okay. Bob mentioned our picnic, and at that picnic we had for the staff, I had mentioned and reviewed some items that, we had over 100 of our staff go through municipal hospitality training. And I had mentioned this in a couple of my updates, but just to let you know, we're reviewing our processes and all our initiatives, just to go beyond customer service, focus on communication as Phil mentioned, and our interactions, you know, with our residents. So that's something that's gonna be ongoing, but just wanted to let you know, and hopefully you see some impacts of that. Bob mentioned the Citizens Academy, that is our, this is, I think, the 11th year we've done this now. We did the first, the first one, which was charter government, how we're organized as a government, roles, roles and operations. The next one will be municipal finance, so we'll do our best to put fund in municipal Couple highlights from the last memo. Bob mentioned the railroad bridge, it is done. There is some lighting yet to do and a little bit of landscaping underneath there. They only just replaced what the sidewalk, so we're gonna fix that up a little bit. So hopefully we can do that without closing that down again. Our South Market, the South Street, Streetscape is supposed to be starting this week. We're coordinating with Main Street and it was a chamber for the events they have going on, that one that you guys had approved previously. Just want to mention Gashi Street plans. Many of you have been around for lots of years and iterations of trying to do something up there. So we have a plan and John and I have been working on a memo that, because we want to go a little bit of history and what the plans are and make sure that the residents are aware. And then we're gonna send that to council too, so probably by the end of this week, we'll be ready to send that out, just at least some plans on how we'd like to proceed and we'll see how that goes. Trying to take into account all the feedback we've got over the decades, actually, that we've started and stopped on something up there. I did want to mention the Christmas Run pool update. As, I think in the last memo update, we had mentioned that it was to go up to bid on August 15th, so it did. And we only got two bids and only one pool contractor, they gave quotes to the contractors that bid it, and both were well over the estimate that we had. So we've been spending a lot of time with pool contractors and the consultant and the pool designer to try to come up with ways to bring that within the estimate. So we're, right now, the plan is to rebid it. And most likely, the biggest impact is, will be, in order to get good bids, we're probably gonna have to keep the pool closed for next year as well, to lengthen that process, or the timeframe, so that we get good bids. But some of the feedback we got was, they felt it was too tight of a timeframe. So, and a couple of other things that we're gonna do, and so hopefully we can have that ready to go and get that out here soon. And hopefully we'll have good news the next time we have bid updates, but I wanted to let you know that happened. Bob mentioned a few restaurants, Texas Roadhouse, Big Beak, another Big Beak Coffee and Chick-fil-A did, and we'll get at least preliminary plan approval at our planning commission. So as far as we've been with those so far, so hopefully that happens. The Seaman Expansion that Bob mentioned, that should be about 50 new jobs for the city of Worcester, so that's good as well. And Bob mentioned the zoning updates. And in addition to getting with OHM, I know Vince has been working hard to reach out to members of the committee and residents to get feedback. And I met with Mr. Gaffey, met with a couple other residents and members of that committee to get feedback. So we've actually, we continue to tweak it based on those conversations. So hopefully what you see presented to planning commission will be reflective of those conversations and adjustments to try to address most of the concerns that we have. So that's been ongoing ever since. There's been a lot of meetings, a lot of months, a lot of feedback back and forth, so a lot of different entities. And with that, that is all I have.
Okay. Looking at the agenda, we have nine items of new business all on first reading. Only item four is budgeted, all others will need three readings or a suspension of the rules. The administration is respectfully requesting approval of the first item on the agenda tonight. It is a preliminary procedural step in the Grand Farm annexation, and the reason for the urgency is explained in the supporting documents. For the newer council members, this is not a vote on the annexation. For the newer council members, this is not a vote on the annexation itself. This will occur at the end of the process, when it comes back to council after the county has dealt with it. This vote does not commit council one way or the other, or the city, on that ultimate vote on the annexation. There is some urgency at items 2, 3, 7, 8, and 9, only because those need done by the end of September. So if council choose to address them tonight, fine. If they don't, next meeting I will be saying there's some emergency at our next meeting. I do have, I'm just going to really blow through this and just say, we talked a lot at the last meeting in June about property tax reform in Ohio and some of the consequences. While we were on break, that, there was a lot of activity going on with regards to that that you may have followed. I've got something here, but I'll save that for a future meeting, because nothing's going to happen the next two weeks. But just because we kind of got over some, just over some deadlines, the budget got adopted, got passed, there were line item vetoes, the legislature came back to try to override, with the idea of overriding some of those vetoes, a lot of drama back and forth, but just because we got beyond that, doesn't mean the issue's gone away. So, more on that later. Again, thank you for your patience, and the last thing I have, I promise you that we're going to get a report from Kevin about Wago, and Kevin, you're up.
Hey, Council, just wanted to give a quick, high-level update here, I've just gone a lot of time on it, but, but we lost service for Wago on August 4th. We just had a ribbon cutting last Friday. Service so far is going really well. Our face route, which is the bus loop around the city, that is right on par with kind of a wrap, good to share my ability, so we had about 1,400 rides on that service. About 130 of those were the first two days of the month, when we were still operating the shared bus, and the rest was all on Wago, so it was good to see the ratchet carried over that. Our on-demand service, which is more point-to-point based, where we're picking people up anywhere in the city of Worcester, in one mile radius, and then taking them directly to their location, or their destination, I should say. That's been going well, too. We have about 550 trips on that. What's really cool about Wago is we're collecting a lot more data than when we were on the tax pass rate, we save a lot more workable data. So when you go into the app, you can save your trip purpose. So on our on-demand service, of those about 550 trips, we have 52% going to work trips, and then about 25% were for medical, and 13% shopping, kind of to catch up. And I just wanted to give everyone just a brief image of the app. When you have the service, do not use the app to access our service, but I just wanted to give a brief look at kind of what it looks like. For those people who don't want to use the app, they can just call into our dispatch. We have right now two dispatchers, and I think we have a third one in training in Worcester, they know the area, which is really helpful. They can set up your account, you never have to interface with us, but the app is really helpful for both on-demand service and for the face route. So the first image here, kind of looks like Google Maps, it kind of is. So the blue dot is where I was this morning, right here at City Hall, and those are all our bus stops. So we went in and put in our lap long for the bus stops, and we made sure to name them. So obviously, stop 1 is at the library, and then the dot-dot-zero-zero, that's the time the bus is there. So for college students who are new to Worcester, and have to update the system, they can download the app at any bus stop, and then see kind of how to get to any other ones, and then kind of plan their route if they're using the face route. But the app also works for on-demand service, is probably primarily what it uses for. So that second screen there, that second picture, is kind of our reroute options, so we can park right now, and our service will do the best to accommodate you. And then we also have to park at, so like when you're done with work of the day, you know, you're done at 5, you can schedule your 5:05, or if you're going to work, you have that arrive-by option, that little red box there. So if you need to beat up 9 or 11, probably make sure your app works on time. And then that last screen is kind of what it looks like once you've scheduled a trip. Do want to announce, so we've been collecting a lot of data on the service. Through the planning process, we decided to go with a higher rate per same-day service. We began a month's worth of data, we didn't have, we had eight rides out of these 500 that were scheduled same-day, and none were at the general public rate. We have discounted riders that are a little different, a little cheaper, that are riders over the age of 62, with disabilities, or veterans. So we just decided to kind of simplify the process, and dispatch were capable, and we had the vehicle capacity, so now it's all just one flat rate of $5, $3 for an on-demand service. So that just took effect today. We're seeing a lot more trips. I was at the, our central transit building today, and, you know, saw a lot of trips there today. Couple little things, too, we're doing a lot of engagement events. So we're at the farmer's market with the vehicle, I spoke to Kiwanis Club, and then OSU had their student fair, so we came and talked to students for that. We have a couple more coming up, we'll be at WEDC, and then Housing Coalition, we're going to do kind of a summer event at Community Action, where we bring a vehicle and kind of talk with people for head start, pick up or drop off, so we're going to pick a day and kind of advertise that a little bit. Also, we've been invited to a couple, a couple businesses are going to be interested in our, the Art of Lex Health Fair, to come talk about the service at that. And then in October, we're going to get the Senior Forum, and Grace, kind of for seniors. So that's, that's going to have a Wago, just a high level, any questions, please, let me know.
What are your hours of operation?
Our hours, weekdays, we are 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And then Saturday, we are 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Okay.
The other things to expand those hours, to meet people's, what's happening, and other people who start at 7:00?
Send us some work data with data and see, right now, there's not, the ODOT fund program is very limited, as far as like expansion stuff, so we're going to see what hours, trying to make sense. We've done some kind of model language, did have, but, I guess I don't see this, but we do know that like, for the end of the day, it drops off, so it might be an opportunity where we align hours and make sure that we're getting the most riders, and especially for work trips, if there's a shift that we can pick up, but it's still nothing planned yet.
And that's kind of where we're really engaging with the WEDC, relying on them to either get us in or speak with the businesses themselves to figure out, hey, what are you hearing back from your workers on what time they need to get here? So we're trying to get through those doors to really hear it firsthand. So I want to say thanks to the WEDC for that, too.
Yeah, it's been very helpful, and we need to grab a minute. Part of this planning process for the transition, we have the Transit Advisory Committee, so the TAC, WEDC, JFS, the commissioners, and kind of talking about, I know a lot of their stakeholders, but talking about sort of the policies, and we hope to be kind of best for residents in a kind of, you know.
With that, if people have questions for Kevin, I'm sure you'd be happy to answer them. You're on, I'm going to do it then. Otherwise, I would thank you for giving us the time to bring you up today.
All right, thank you. Yes, it was a lot, a lot happening while we were on break, and all good stuff. As we move on, we have no petitions, and we have no communications from the public related to agenda items this evening. We also have no committee reports, and we have no public hearings. We have no unfinished business, which will move us into new business. And our first item is ordinance number 2025-11. Ms. Hamilton, if you'll please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2025-11. An ordinance stating to the Wayne County Board of Commissioners pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 709.03, the services which the city of Worcester would be able to provide for annexation of multiple parcel sites known as parcel numbers 53-01608.001, 53-01608.000, and which are contiguous to the corporation limits and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Knappich, floor is yours.
Yes, thank you very much. It's nice to be back, and thank you for, for taking over things for the month that I was out with my hip replacement. I appreciate everybody here on the, on the dais. This, as the mayor said, this is not a vote or a petition for annexation. Basically, this is required by law. The city has to, when someone comes to them for annexation, has to be able to represent to the commissioners, the county commissioners, what services we would be able to provide to these potential residents that would be annexed in. Jonathan has taken the lead on this project, and I'm going to let him explain where this came from and how it came about.
All right, well, thank you very much, Ms. Knappich. This before us is a petition where the agent is yours truly. This came to us as we were approached by the property owners, specifically the Graham family, who was looking to be able to support housing development in the future with this site, a total of 245.868 acres. Basically, where Silver Road is today, this territory would cover the extents of the remainder of the roadway that is not within city limits. If you're coming into the city, like, let's say from Columbus or Findlay, and you're going eastbound on Route 30, this is really the first hill that you see that makes up our city. And today, partially farmed, and the rest of it is, I should say, a minimal amount of it is undeveloped terrain as this descends into the Overton Valley. When we had the opportunity to speak with the property owner, they were particularly interested in supporting similar styles of residential development as we've seen in the recent past, such as with Woodcrest being performed by Schlewa Home Builders off of Melrose, Spring Run, as well as Clear Creek. And with the particular acreage that they have being over 100 acres, as we've been talking about housing and the need for housing in the last several years, this presents a really unique opportunity to be able to have a marketable site within the city that can appeal to our larger home builders, such as Pulte and Drees and so forth. A lot of our larger regional statewide national home builders are typically discounting sites, unless they have at least 100 acres to offer. And so this is their intention, that they'd like to be able to support housing. Being of that fits a strategic interest. We did offer, as we have with similar style developments, to serve as the agent for the petitioners. So that basically means that we take responsibility for running this through the process to bring before the commissioners. So a copy of that petition is enclosed herein, and we have effectively three parties, the Graham estate, the Graham family estate, David Graham, as well as Ann and Erin Ober, who are residents of this community. So this does, as Ms. Knappich shared, require, before the county would entertain a public hearing, the county looks to the community in all cases of annexation to determine what levels of service we may provide should the property be granted annexation. So within the ordinance, you see our estimated police response times, access to infrastructure, and proximity to nearest water and sewer. So those would be infrastructure elements and services that could be made available to the property with council's authorization. So it is fully up to council to determine what services, if any, it provides to any property that is requesting annexation. As a matter of best practice, we have utilized the mechanisms under 70902 for annexation. That is a standard annexation, very popularly throughout the state. We're seeing a lot of interest in expedited annexations. That doesn't really serve our interests financially as a city, so for any form of annexation, we typically would recommend that we follow the standard format, and serving as the agent allows us to do that. So without further ado, we do have a map of that territory, which is up on the screen, again, of the properties surrounding Silver Road. Unfortunately, this particular map, you want to take a look at the gray outline, it's not everything highlighted, but we did go ahead and notify all the properties that are highlighted of the annexation just for transparency, and that's also required under a higher revised code. We are seeking approval from council on this legislation to provide to the Wayne County Commissioners no later than 20 days before the October public hearing, October 22nd. So that effectively would make September 15th the very last time that we could consider this legislation, before we would have to have a special meeting in order to meet the council deadline. So that is my summary.
Excellent. Are there any questions for Jonathan on this?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Jonathan, so is there a plan in place now currently for this land, once it is annexed into the city?
So the plan would be single-family residential. One of the things that was posed to us was, should we, the, I should say that the property owners were very interested in securing R2 zoning, specifically with the ability to accommodate up to six units per acre, which is the same zoning that Spring Run, Clear Creek, Woodcrest have all moved toward. It happens to be, as we're having conversations with the possibility of zoning changes coming up toward the end of the year, that that density feature may be incorporated into R1, there would not be a need for them to pursue zoning. Now, we'll let that conversation play out, and if things go in a different direction, they may come back to us and ask for R2 zoning in order to affect that density level, but they are specifically looking at our other three most recent residential subdivisions and saying, that is the plan that we would like to aspire to. There will be a need on the developer's part to take a look at how they provide infrastructure to that. We do have city infrastructure that is able to serve this site, but as with all development, we do have a need for some additional infrastructure, some of which may be off-site, which as we've talked about before, we could have a conversation about TIF if that is not something that the development is able to move forward with on its own. As a matter of policy, we've never funded onsite infrastructure, such as the internal roads or internal water or sewer lines within a subdivision. But at this stage, without visibility on a master plan from a developer, we wouldn't have clarity on exactly how that would fall. At this point, they're looking to see that the annexation would be amenable to council prior to moving forward with marketing this in earnest.
Thank you.
And it's my understanding that there's no specific developer right now?
Correct, correct. And my, to put it further, most recently speaking with their Realtor, Jack Gantz, representing them, that they're still working around putting together marketing materials to make a wide splash, but the crux of the matter is going to be whether or not council's amenable to allowing them to come into the city.
Any other questions?
Jonathan, just to clarify, all property when annexed to the city comes in as R1, and then they petition for a change in zoning at a later date, correct?
Correct. And our anticipation would be that they would prefer to just stay at the default.
Okay, with that being said, I am going to leave this on first reading, and we can pass it the next time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jonathan.
Okay. Our next ordinance, 2025-12. Ms. Hamilton, if you please read it for us.
Ordinance number 2025-12, an ordinance amending the annual appropriation ordinance.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
All right, so it looks like we're going to be looking to modify something a little bit here where it looks like we're looking to take debt before and instead we're looking to take money from the general fund due to some high interest rates. And it looks like through this project that we're looking to do here on the Silver Road construction, we actually get a little bit of reduction of cost from $800,000 to $665,000. So overall, it seems like through what I'm reading in the write-up, our cash position is still strong, Mr. Dordia. So, I don't know, I'm the finance guy around here. I tend to not like debt, so using cash rather than debt seems to hit my ears a little better. So anything you want to add on that, Mr. Dordia?
Yeah, just a, so, a couple of things. Number one, interest rates are still relatively higher than what we're earning, so 130 basis point spread. So we'd be paying more than we're earning, that's not good. The second thing is there's issuance costs when you issue debt. So, number three, then we also have the cash, so it makes perfect sense to utilize our cash. And then four, we are going to actually, the TIF, the Silver Road TIF will pay this money back, the money's back. So the faster that's built up, the faster the money will come back to us. So it's, we're sort of short-term loaning to ourselves instead of going outside to get the debt.
Any questions or comments around this? Then I'm going to motion to suspend the rules and try and pass tonight.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules, second by Ms. Knappich. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Jose?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Jose?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Next item, resolution 2025-47. Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-47, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
Yep, this one is, we're just looking at accepting the inside millage for 2026 as received by the county budget commission. Looks like we'll receive up to 3.4 million in this. Looks like about 2.9 million will go to the general fund and then Fireman's Fund will get a little under 250 and the police pension will get under 250. So that'll kind of comprise everything on that. We are a little bit time-sensitive, need it by, to the county auditor by September 30th. Mr. Dordia, really anything else we need to know about this one? It looks like it's pretty boilerplate.
It is, and there's no change in the millage.
So there's not really much to debate on it. So any, any questions from council?
No, just a comment that we do this every year.
Yep. So I'll, motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Jose?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Okay, rules have been suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaff.
It's been a long break.
It has been a long break. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Jose?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution is approved. Next item, resolution 2025-48. And Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-48, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for a waterline replacement project on West Bowman Street between Northwestern Avenue and Woodland Avenue and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So as Ms. Hamilton said, this is a request to advertise for bids and enter into contract with the lowest and best bidder for waterline replacement on West Bowman Street between Northwestern and Woodland Avenues. This existing waterline has a history of breaks and leaks and thus is kind of costly when it comes to maintenance and repairs. And so it has become high priority on the city's waterline replacement list. The estimated costs are $200,000 and this is a budgeted item. And so I will move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden.
Second.
Is there a second by Mr. Abernathy? Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Jose?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Okay. Our next item, resolution 2025-49. It is marked on our paperwork as budgeted, but it is not. It will be a three reading item. So with that, Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-49, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, to accept the funds awarded through the Transportation Alternative Program, TAP, and safety funding and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So this request will authorize the Director of Administration to enter into what's known as an LPA or Local Public Agency Agreement with ODOT to accept up to $536,000 from their Transportation Alternative Program or TAP, as well as $300,000 in safety funding. The money is slated for construction of pedestrian and multi-use improvements along West Melton Road between Commerce Parkway and Friendsville Road. This is a continuation of the city's efforts to expand and connect its multi-use paths around the city, as well as to provide better access between businesses, schools, and residential areas. We're fortunate to receive this kind of support from ODOT, without which we probably wouldn't undertake this project, or at least we'd be on the hook for all of the expenses. And so in order to stay on track with ODOT's schedule, I'm going to make a motion to place this on third and final reading tonight.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jose. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Jose?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Thank you. And just to clarify, I did ask a couple of questions of Mr. Rice about this project. So it is not slated to take place until, correct me if I'm wrong, 2028? Is that right? Okay, so we're still a ways out and there will be improvements on both sides of the roadway. Thank you. I meant to say that earlier. So I'll make a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Mr. Jose?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Okay. Next item, resolution 2025-50, was also marked as budgeted, but again, it's a similar situation where it's a grant fund request to file with ODOT. So before we have Ms. Warden give us the skinny, we'll, Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-50, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to accept Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, Transportation Improvement District, TID, grant funds for engineering design services for the roundabouts of the Bell Avenue and Cleveland Road and the Portage Road and Cleveland Road intersections. Enter into an engineering services agreement with CESO, Inc., for the design services, appropriate funds from the capital improvement fund for the project, and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So I don't know, I can't speak for everyone on council, but I sure miss talking about roundabouts for the last couple of months, so I was very excited to see this on the agenda tonight. That being said, this is something that I know the city has talked about for some time now and I personally agree that this is an area within our city limits that is worthy of addressing some congestion problems. So this area in question is right in front of Worcester Hospital at the Bell Avenue and Cleveland Road intersections and also the intersection of Cleveland and Portage Roads. The city has been awarded a $250,000 ODOT Transportation Improvement District Grant for the engineering designs and this request is to authorize accepting the grant award and also to enter into engineering services contract with CESO. Am I saying that right? Is it a, okay. Is that right? Okay, great. For, for the designs. This is not in this year's budget, so the city is requesting that local funds that are required for the project, approximately $250,000, that those be appropriated. And as I said, we discussed this a few times over the years in the city in various committees and as a, as a body, as council, to address the growing congestion in that area. It's in our 10-year plan for the engineering to begin in 2026. However, if we do accept this grant, we will be able to begin engineering sooner and also have to, 50% of it paid for from ODOT funding. So that's saving our taxpayers a lot of dollars and, you know, that's win-win as far as I'm concerned. So I think it would be foolish to turn down this type of gift from ODOT and so I am going to make a motion to place this on third and final tonight.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules, second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the suspension.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Jose?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Thank you. And just to clarify, I would like to say that this doesn't in any way say that the city is moving forward with the roundabout plan. Not to say that we won't, but this is just the initial engineering plans for it. We'll be discussing this later, at a later date to provide further funding for it.
This is just accepting the grant funds.
Thank you. Yep, so I make a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Jose?
Yes.
Okay. Move on to resolution 2025-51. Next three items will be done by Mr. Abernathy, but first, Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-51, a resolution accepting the Group A recommendations of the Worcester Tax Incentive Review Council with respect to existing enterprise zone agreements, community reinvestment area agreements, and tax increment financing projects and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, just wanted to recuse myself from this in the next two ordinances, just business conflicts.
Understand. All right.
All right, so this particular one is for Grouping A. So we'll have, the next few will be A, B, and C. So for Grouping A, we had modifications for G&amp;G Properties. The modification was to authorize a new tenant, which is the Spoon Market. And then we also had a modification for Brian and Tammy Poland, modification to authorize a new tenant for Fleet Feet. The rest were left as is on all the different agreements. They, they're all in continuance or in compliance, so anybody have any questions? Again, Mr. Myers, I know you were on the committee. Anything you want to add?
No, it does seem as though we've passed this pretty rapidly here at City Council every year, but they are reviewed in pretty much detail. Jonathan presents the status of every single one of these in some detail, where the businesses are with regard to their commitments and the committee reviews them and makes recommendations to the council so that we don't have to do that at an evening. We'd be here quite a while to do all that. So thank you for Mr. Malley, a lot of homework he does before he even gets to that point. And I did sit in for Mr. Sanders at the meeting. It was very, I learned a lot. So, but if you have questions, the experts are there, but these are pretty routine. Only when there's an issue do we, this council generally get involved with making those changes. The two you mentioned are just changes in tenants.
Yeah, and the minutes were very detailed. Thank you. They, they helped a lot for me to get through it, so. With that, any other questions, comments? Then I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, motion to suspend the rules, second by Mr. Myers. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the suspension.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, second by Ms. Knappich. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll on the adoption.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item is Group B of the TIRC Enterprise Zone Agreements, resolution 2025-52. But Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-52, a resolution accepting the Group B recommendations of the Worcester Tax Incentive Review Council with respect to existing enterprise zone agreements, community reinvestment area agreements, and tax increment financing projects and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
All right, in Group B, the only modification was for Baker Properties in compact. Recommend to modify to authorize a new property owner, Triple J 1909, common ownership with tenant. Other than that, it was a continuation and in compliance. Any additional questions or comments? With that, I will motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Ms. Hamilton, please call the roll.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Okay. Last resolution, 2025-53. Ms. Hamilton, please read it for us.
Resolution number 2025-53, a resolution accepting the Group C recommendations of the Worcester Tax Incentive Review Council with respect to existing enterprise zone agreements, community reinvestment area agreements, and tax increment financing projects for immediate enactment.
All right, Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
Group C did not have any modifications. Everybody was in compliance and continuing.
Mr. President, I should probably recuse myself from this particular one based on who Group C.
Due to Worcester brush?
Yes.
Understand?
Yep.
All right.
All right, then we will need to leave this one on its first reading.
Yes, we will. Yes, we will.
I need to see if... This may create a problem, however. Passage before September 30th, 2025 is proper to maintain program compliance with the State of Ohio and we are not going to have sufficient
Right. We'll bleed off into October on this.
If you think that council members could specifically exclude themselves from the applications or particular, you know, Worcester brush, sort of refrain and stay from that, but the rest.
Break it into two parts.
Like not the whole resolution, just that section?
Yeah, I knew Jonathan wants to.
Sure, and I want to correct my statement on the September 30th. That is in reference to our enterprise zones. I should have clarified that. That is to allow the county to be able to move forward. So we will not have an issue if we go all three readings on this. The reason why we do the individual groups is just to encourage maximum participation, but we will not have a problem complying with the regulations if we go into October.
Okay.
So we can run into the first meeting in October then, which we'll, we'd have to anyways?
Yes, sir, and that's a correction.
Unless we go through the process of breaking this all down separately.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
All right. I like that solution because I really didn't want to see us have to break it up. All right. Yes, our recused council members can return. We'll move on to miscellaneous. We've got a couple people here that I'm a little bit, candidly, I'm confused as to why you want to talk to the city because neither, the two of yous don't live in the city. But at this point, since this actually meeting hasn't really gone on as long as I was afraid it was going to, I'll give you two minutes for you to speak. So is it Sean Amstutz?
Stephen Amstutz.
Stephen, sorry.
How are you doing? My name is Stephen Amstutz. I am a civil rights advocate and I need to provide public notice to the city of Worcester. This is in accordance with USC rules of civil procedure, as well as Rule 17 and Rule 20 of the United States Supreme Court. The Constitution of the United States has an overarching requirement that every state must follow. Clause 1 of Amendment 5 states, no person shall be held to answer for a capital otherwise infamous crime unless on presentment or indictment by a grand jury. However, the state of Ohio, Inwin County, has enacted its own internal good legislation that permits prosecuting attorneys and police officers to charge by way of an information as opposed to an indictment. And a minor violation is when you pay public officials to break the law. The Constitution has two areas that enforce this. Article 1, Section 10 says, no state shall create any law that shall impair the obligation of contracts. Police officers, prosecutors, judges are all under contract and are contracted to perform based on the oath of affirmation that they took to support and defend the Constitution. The Fourth Amendment is the other place that you will find the enforcement of this issue. And that is where it states that no state shall create or enforce any law that abridges the privileges and the immunity of the United States citizen. The privileges and immunities of the United States citizens are at a minimum, those enumerated within the Bill of Rights and the First Ten Commandments. Unfortunately, the state of Ohio has enacted a law that's inferior to its constitution that permits public officials, judges, law enforcement officers, whom you all pay to violate the Constitution of the United States as a result. And there is an ordinary amount of people that are currently imprisoned in the state of Ohio illegally and under constitution.
Justin Nicely?
How are you all doing this evening? My name is Justin Nicely. I am a parent and civil rights advocate here in the state of Ohio and the city captain of the Ohio Coalition for the Qualified Immunity. I am also here to serve notice here to Wayne County, as well as also the city of Worcester, as it is provided here with accordance with the USDS rules of civil procedures, as well as Rule 17 and Rule 20 of the United States Supreme Court. Now, we do have several constituents over at the national level of F.C. talking to the offices of Pam Bondi, Cash Patel, as well as RFK, many others that are in collaboration with the Family Ford Project, Ohio Coalition for the Qualified Immunity, and also the We Shall Be Free Tour. Tanawat Downing is litigating this issue at the United States Supreme Court. And I am here to notify you all that if you do continue to pay public officials to break the law, that criminal sanction will be being handed down and can come from that. Now, I'm asking all of you honorable individuals to please take a look at Clause 1 and Amendment 5 to confirm that what we are saying is to be true and then to direct your public officials to act in a lawful and constitutional manner consistent with the obligations that are codified in the Constitution of the United States of America. I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you. And I'd like to put this on record.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Barnett? I know you live in, I know you live in the city.
It was past summer. So a week ago yesterday, I'm mowing the yard. And I noticed two Worcester spiders turning left on Burbank, going to the station. Probably dinner time. It's about 5:00. I kept on mowing. Five minutes later, here they come back. Four guys didn't even get to eat their dinner. Lying down there at 50 miles per hour, everybody stops at light and went straight through, no problem at all. You put a peanut in there, you put a speed bump in there for our police, our EMS, and our fire department. If you go on this peanut, you're slapping people in the face of Worcester. You are. You don't care about their safety. I am so mad right now, and I think you can see that. That's going to be a giant speed bump. Everybody that's, all of you traveled to roundabouts, is slower. It's slower. They're not going to be able to go by my house at 50 anymore. They're going to slow down. So somebody's having a heart attack. Their spouse is holding their hand. Hold on, honey. Hold on. They'll be here soon. How many times have we seen on the news, somebody's life's been saved because of a quick response? As simple as that. You don't put a speed bump a quarter of a mile from our safety station. It's just unethical. Thank you for your time, and I'll be back next week, too.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Gaffey, we'll start with you this evening. Is there anything you have to add?
Other than just so wonderful to be back with all of your smiling faces. I think that's about it for me for this evening.
Very good. Ms. Warden?
Thank you. I was glad to hear that the city has, I know Mr. Truski touched on this. You've been communicating with residents who are perhaps not in favor of the changes to the recycling program. I think that, yeah, I in fact experienced the same communications issues in my line of work. It's really hard to meet people where they are. And so figuring that out is going to be a huge step forward. So I commend you for recognizing that and taking the steps to do that. I think that is, that just shows that we are listening and, you know, that's exactly what people want. So way to go on that. I had something else, but I forget. So I still have summer brain, so thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Malta?
Thank you. I would like to thank everybody for coming, joining us tonight. We had a nice big crowd, which is usually unusual. We have lots of viewers. And I cannot wait for this fiber to be over. So I'm on board with that 100%. Please, get it in. Let's get it done, then we can move forward. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Myers?
Thank you. I just have four quick things. One, I just want to say hats off to Kevin White and his outstanding work that he's been doing on the transportation. I know a lot of people are like, it took forever. He's really working as fast as he can, but it's a great job. And I know they're going to continue to tweak it to make it, make it better. And that's moving forward. Second thing, Labor Day afternoon, I had a little bit of an issue. City sewer line was leaking into some of the ponds there south of Burbank, or south of Oakley. Those have been around for a while. Might know those as Miller Lakes. There's a series of lakes. I call them ponds. They're kind of small, so. But the city sewer line was leaking into those. I thought, well, because of the odor and the fish dying and things, I'll call the utilities people just to give them a heads up. They'll get, at least get a message when they come in on Tuesday that they could look after this. I was impressed, number one, that they answered the phone. There was somebody there. And turns out I knew him from school. But anyway, there was somebody there. Within less than an hour, there was a gentleman from the city. I'm not going to mention names because there's a lot of people involved. My hat's off to all of them. Incredible work. They're still probably there now. They were there all day. But on Labor Day weekend, in the afternoon, they had at least one or two crews there. First, the guy that walked over from his house on Christmas run and walked the property with me. He was amazing. We identified the problem. He said, he kind of smiled, I'm going to try to get some crews here. I don't really know. But less than an hour, we had, I think, two crews trying to mitigate the problem. What they were able to do is hopefully save pond number two from being more damaged. The first pond is probably total loss. The Ohio EPA was here today. They tested the water and it's completely, no oxygen, and it's all completely dead. But they did do the best they could and they were able to, on Labor Day evening, they were still there using hoses and pumps and stuff to save the second pond from being completely destroyed. So hats off to them on Labor Day weekend to come in and take, to do that. And again, not only those crews, but Ohio EPA was there today working on the problem. So I appreciate all the work from the city utilities department that were there for that. Oh, I also want to say, it kind of didn't come through this, but if you missed the city event where we did honoring all of our employees, it was a very nice event. I attended. It was my last one because I will no longer be on council. And I don't think they invite retired council people to this, so I've probably done. But I wanted to make sure that we didn't go without congratulating Joe Montgomery on 25 years with the city. Thanks for the many years of good service and hopefully many more, because you look pretty young for being here that long. I don't buy I look that good when I'm your age. And then lastly, I just want to say congratulations to Matt Fisher and welcome him back. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Knappick?
Yes, it is great to be back here. As all of you know, I had an accident in May when I was hiking and ended up with a broken foot and a broken hip. And I was out for a while before the break. And everybody was so supportive. I appreciate that very much. I'm walking well now and happy to be back. I wanted to welcome back Chief Fisher. It's great to see him. And it truly is a miracle that he's here with us and as well, doing as well as he is. And then I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight. We really appreciate it when people come and they participate. It means a lot. Thank you very much.
Mr. Abernathy?
Welcome back. It's starting to get a little cooler in the mornings, a little cooler in the evenings. Falls around the corner, but it's a great summer. Had a lot of great opportunities to chat with a lot of people around town. Definitely, this is a community that's very active and really had a great summer getting to know a lot more people around town and just hearing what they had to say. So just a wonderful summer, very hot, very rainy, very humid. But it doesn't seem to stop this town at all. We just, we keep on trucking. So again, I want to echo just a welcome back to Matt Fisher. Man, it is truly a miracle and God bless him because that is a testament right there that he's still upright and standing and doing so well. So I was so glad to see him here tonight. Looks great. So welcome back, Matt. I know, hopefully you're watching. I know you kind of snuck out there earlier. But really, that's all I got tonight, but just really glad to see him be able to stop in tonight and looking so good.
All right, thank you. Ms. Husey?
So I get to give my summer, what I did on this summer vacation report?
If you really want to. I mean, not that I don't.
We've got time.
I mean, we.
Why didn't you do the first one?
There's a certain level of interest, but yet, you know what I mean.
Well, then you got to give yours when we're done.
You could give your time to Jonathan. He could go over the annexations up again.
Yeah.
Yeah, now Jonathan, you're done.
Just glad to see, you know, the college back in session, the schools back up and running again. You know, it's good to see Chief Fisher back, you know, at the Safety Center and here at City Hall. And we'll see everybody at the fair.
That's right.
Oh, yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, second. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all. Welcome back.